Which everyone comes first. And don't leave without coming up and signing out on one of the sign out sheets that are up here on the board table. That way you make sure you get credit for being here. And before we get started, I just wanted to say thank you to our host this evening, Elsmere, as well as to the Elsmere PTA. And we always feel very welcomed when we come here, and so we just wanted to say thank you. First up is our approval of minutes. It is recommended by the superintendent that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the October ninth, 2024 regular board meeting.
Sure.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That carries. I have three meeting reports, and first is our superintendent's report.
Sure, thank you. This week is School Board Appreciation Week, and I want to take a moment to express my gratitude for all of your dedication and hard work. Your unwavering commitment to our students, staff, and community is truly remarkable. Through your leadership, you help shape the path to success, and although your efforts often go unnoticed, they are felt in every classroom, every achievement, and every step forward we have. So on behalf of our school community, thank you for the invaluable contributions and for always putting our students first. And with that, we have some art students who are here tonight to help celebrate our Board Appreciation Week. And I see this, our art supervisor, Melanie Painter, is here.
Are we good now? Oh, there we go. So I wanted to say thank you. I know a few of you were able to attend the New York State School Boards Association Conference and got to see some of the students' work on display at that show. The show was actually on display on the New York State Art Teachers' website as well. So congratulations to all of our students that are here tonight for having your outstanding artwork selected to be on display at the conference in New York City. It's sponsored by the New York State Art Teachers' Association and the New York State School Boards Association. It's intended to highlight visual art across the state. It's a great honor for you to be representing the school's art program at this special event. School Board members and young artists from across New York State have the opportunity to view your artwork. The art teachers in the Bethlehem Central School District each selected two works of art from their schools to enter in this exhibit. It's a digital display, and the slideshow of Bethlehem Central School District will be on display tonight. So the images are actually printed in note cards that we made for each one of you as a thank you for the hard work that you do. So you'll see some of the artwork on those cards for you as well. So without further ado, I'm going to bring up our students. So when you hear your name called, come on up, and I'm going to line you up here so that your families can take some pictures of you and celebrate your achievements. So first is Griffin Gardner. Shannon Peschel. So Shannon Peschel. And Dylan Mueller. And Chauvin Segal. Violet Bouchon. I saw Violet. Thanks, Violet. Evan Hopper. Alex Carnario. Lacey Jones. Madison Quam. Kiera Murphy. Angie Graff. Ren Gambulungi. Christina Piccolo. I'm just so thankful you're all here. This is great. Kennedy Lee. Lita Start. Quinn Knob. Kieran McNay. Melissa Yang. Yuzeki Izumi. Max Cubello. Molly Kedor. I guess we've got to move down. We've got to move this way now, I'm sorry. We'll scoot you this way a little bit so people aren't out the door. Violet Bickersmith. And Erica Piccolo. And we've been doing this for a few years, and this is the best attendance I think we've had. And I just want to say thank you to all the families for getting your students here. This is really just a great accomplishment. So thank you so much to all of you. And don't go anywhere because I have certificates for you and some pins, too. And you need to stay here for photos. Don't anybody move.
Stay the whole time.
A bunch of mass exodus.
Yes.
That's all I have for my report.
Okay. You are welcome. Yes, you're more than, more than welcome to stay, but if our art students would like to leave, we totally understand.
Feel free to hang out, or not, it's all your call.
So we'll give you guys a name.
Go do your homework, you're all good.
So next on the agenda this evening is our board report and discussion. And first, I just wanted to say, I wanted to say thank you for the book donation that is on our behalf to all the different buildings. My books are going to the middle school. And right away, I was, I was struck by this one by Alice Hoffman, When We Flew Away, which is a novel of Anne Frank before The Diary. And I've actually, I have never read it, and I think I might have to get it out of the library and read it because it looks really interesting. So I don't know if my other board members would like to share about any of their books, book piles in front of them. Catherine, if you want to go first, you're down there.
Thank you. Yes, I've got books heading over to Hamagro, and they're going to be well-loved, I can tell. But one of them is Kate DiCamillo, which, DiCamillo, I'm not certain how to say that out loud. But she is a wonderful author, and both of my girls have really enjoyed her books. So I hope the kids at Hamagro will as well.
Thanks, Catherine. Ewan?
Mine are coming right here. So Elsmere gets these books, and one of which in particular. So as a personal hero of mine, which is Catherine Johnson, before you guys had computers, we had computers. Catherine Johnson's one of the world's first and best computers, who did the math herself for NASA, right? The reason we got to the moon is because women like her did the math back there in the back room. John Glenn wouldn't go to space without her personally checking, she'd done all calculations. So it's really nice to acknowledge people like that and just keep them recognition. That's pretty cool.
Thank you. Meredith?
My books are going to Glenmont. I'm very excited. Some beautiful picture books, three nonfiction picture books about nature that look beautiful and engaging picture books, but also teaching about birds and nature.
So my books are going to Eagle Elementary, and they include one that I was checking out. It's called Your Place in the Universe. And it's a pictorial representation, it looks like, of zooming out from one eighth grade student all the way to the known universe and comparing the sizes and having lots of different facts along the way. So if I'm distracted during the meetings, that's why.
Because you're mediaing?
Yes.
Lauren?
My votes are going to Slevelin's, and I love all of them, but these two in particular, your vote matters because it does. I voted in every primary and general election since I turned eighteen, and I hope all of the high school students are registering when they turn eighteen. And this one, Troublemakers in Trousers, because I once had a job where women were not allowed to wear pants, and that is no fun. Wear pants if you want.
Thanks, Lauren. John?
Excuse me, my books are going to the high school. Looks like a great stack of books with some really wonderful topics. The one that stood out to me is called Gather. It's about a teen in Vermont. Sounds very empowering, had a lot to overcome, trying to keep the family home in their name. Mother had an opioid addiction and a lot of great, great challenges to overcome. Sounds like it had some tremendous success. So be a great book for the students to read and learn about overcoming challenges.
Thanks, John. As Melanie mentioned, we had the NISBA conference just happened, and Lauren and Meredith and I were able to go down, and Dave Hurst and Erin Shevers were there as well. And we all heard presentations on a lot of different topics. I, a lot of the ones that I went to were sort of more policy-focused and looking at some of the different policy issues that we want to make sure that we are keeping an eye on, including things around speech and discipline and safety, and even our video conference policy, which apparently we might need to, we might need to relook at just to make sure that it's, it's updated. So that's, that was the, those are the main couple of things I wanted to report out on, and I don't know if anybody else wanted to add anything.
I went to several really interesting sessions at the conference, including one on school safety and another one on policy and artificial intelligence, AI. And I was wondering whether we had an AI policy. I couldn't remember.
No.
But talked a lot about use of AI in classrooms. And so I thought that was probably an important policy that we should get working on. They had some sample policies to look at.
Okay. Ewan?
Couple things. High school concerts, so if you had a chance to go to the high school concerts, they're really quite wonderful. I'm going to take a moment to plan for the Battle and Music Association, which kind of the booster class of music here. I encourage all parents, yeah, to go join that if you're kids quite interested in music. And we're coming to the end of fall sports. A bunch of teams have had a lot of success. I'm not going to try to list all the ones, but I know this comes from the girls. And this one, their nth in a row sectional title. The boys' plus country team has just been doing wonderful things.
So we'll have them in at some point.
Yeah.
And lastly, following up on Lauren's comment, we have an election coming up. Everyone should go vote, do that.
Next are our student reports. Do we have anybody here from the high school student senate? You want to come up to the microphone? Oh, right there, yeah. I didn't even realize it was right in front of my face.
Hi, I'm Claire McGahey. I'm from student senate. I'm the social media director. Last week, we had a successful pep rally where we had the cooperation of our fall sports teams and our administration, and they were able to help us put that on successfully. And now we're moving into planning our fall dodgeball tournament, which will be held between the winter and fall sports, where anybody is welcome and encouraged to attend. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Do you want to conclude on this, we can play?
Sure.
Do we have anybody here from middle school student council?
Hi, I'm Maddix. BCMS celebrated our Farm to You Fest the week of October fourth with trivia and our Salads for Kids Day on Friday. More than 750 salads were served throughout our three lunches, and we would like to thank Mr. Warford and all of our parent volunteers who helped out.
All of our fall sports teams are off to great starts, and we want to thank all coaches for their support.
The middle school's Halloween ball is this Friday, October 25th. The ball will run from six to eight p.m. And we want to thank all of our parent volunteers and our teachers who helped run the event. We are looking forward to another great tournament. We remind all students that there will be no haunted house this year. We remind all students that donations of two food items can cover the cost of admission.
The middle school's running a sock drive called Socktober. We are taking donations of new packaged socks to donate to homeless shelters around the area.
The Helping Hands Club is participating in can instruction, which is an event that's a cross between engineering and community service. We are running a can drive to collect cans that students will use for their can instruction. And after the event, all cans will be donated to the food pantries. The can instruction, the can instruction team will go to the Cross gates mall to compete in their competition, and we wish them luck in can instruction.
We want to remind all parents of students interested in participating in winter sports that student physicals are only good for one calendar year. If your student athlete hit the anniversary date of their physical in the last two months, then they need to get another physical before they can try out.
The winter sign up began this past Monday, October 21st, and the mod season for both basketball and wrestling begins on November 18th.
The winter sign up for swimming will be postponed until December because their season does not start until January.
Parents can access the Arbiter Sports online site by going onto the BC district website.
We want to congratulate the members of our girls varsity golf team on their sectional championship. We also want to congratulate our classmate Charlotte, who's on the team.
We, oh, we want to congratulate our classmate Melissa, whose artwork won the National School of Safety Award, and we encourage all to check out the BCSD website to see her drawing.
Thank you, and we wish you all a happy Halloween.
Thank you, guys. And then I think we might have some friends from Elsmere here to talk to us.
Hi, I'm going to be talking about pride, which stands for personal best, respect and responsibility, integrity, determination, and enthusiasm. If a teacher sees you doing pride, you can, it can be rewarded with signing the wall of fame or getting a pride slip. When you get a pride slip, it gets put in a bucket, and each grade gets one person to be student of the week.
I'm going to talk about the trunkage tree. It's a good thing for the kids because you can be social and, um, yeah.
I'm going to talk about the storybook pumpkin patch. It's where you create a pumpkin that is a character and write what it is in your name and what, who your teacher is on a sheet, and then you bring it into the library along with the decorated pumpkin.
Did you make a pumpkin? What was your pumpkin? Cinnamon rolls? Anne, thank you. You guys want to come up here for a second? Come this way. I have something to give you. I have something to give you. To say thank you. Thank you for coming, guys. Next on our agenda tonight is our presentation, and we are having a presentation on wellness at Bethlehem Central. Is there a microphone? I think there is one over there, but. Whatever Brittany says.
Well, thank you so much, everyone, for being here this evening. I'm going to start with a circle. This is something that we do at the beginning of our faculty meetings and in classrooms. So only the person holding the talking piece can speak. So I'm going to start with Dr. Hurst. The question to respond to is, when you hear wellness, what do you think of?
Think of exercise.
I think of a beautiful sunrise.
Mental wellness and gut health.
Life satisfaction.
Being healthy.
Trying not to repeat. Nutrition.
The whole person.
I mean, kind of pets, but also having someone you can actually talk to.
Being able to enjoy the sun and ride through the tough spots.
Support of friends and loved ones.
Well, thank you so much for all those things. I think we can summarize that by saying wellness means a lot of things to a lot of people. Wellness is actually a really important piece of Bethlehem Central School District. It's one of our four main tenants, along with academics, character, and community. So it's really important that we talk about wellness and let you know what we're doing to address wellness here in Bethlehem.
All right, good evening. I'm Thomas Carney. I teach sixth grade earth science at the middle school. I'm also a part of the district wellness committee, so I appreciate the time to speak to you all in the community about, you know, the importance of wellness and what our district is looking to do moving forward. So when we have a child, for example, in school who is physically or emotionally unavailable for learning, it might be because they're hungry, they go to school and didn't have breakfast, they might be experienced, might have experienced trauma at home. We know that they're less available for learning and growth. We also know that this negatively impacts their decision-making that, that they make not only at home but at school. And these decisions might impact themselves, it might impact their peers. It also impacts their ability to positively and effectively communicate with those around them. So this really impacts the other three pillars that we have in our district, the community, the character, as well as the academic part. So wellness is pretty much a limiting factor to the other three pillars that we have in the district, and it's something that we're really working towards to bolster so that our kids, our community, our staff feel supported and can be successful with all these goals and our missions in the district.
We're very fortunate that our wellness committee is comprised of representatives from all of the schools and from all levels and from all areas. So you can see that we have teachers, service providers, administrators, supervisors, and we're hoping to get some support staff as well because everyone is a part of this community and all voices are important as we look towards improving wellness. We meet three times a year for a half day. We've had our first meeting and got off to a great start, and I'll talk to you a little bit more about that later on. We have subcommittees, though, that meet regularly, or meet on their own throughout the year at other times. The model that we follow to address health and wellness is the CDC model called Whole School, Whole Child, Whole Community. And this is a student-centered approach that talks about the connection between how a student is feeling physically, mentally, emotionally, and their academic progress. And we know that they're closely intertwined. The Whole School, Whole Community, Whole Child model has ten major tenants. You can see they're all around the outside in teal, and I'm going to talk to you about each one of those and how we're addressing them, with a highlight on the last three. So the first tenant is nutritional services. And I know you heard from Claire just recently. Our nutritional services are a really important part of our school district, and we have a great program here. We have school gardens. There's dietary information that's available on the website so that people with allergies or other health concerns can check really closely with the calorie content and so forth. We have Cornell Cooperative Extension coming in once a month to do programs for our elementary students and teaching them about different local products. There's a breakfast program, very active breakfast program. We have a backpack program and really healthy menu options as well. Our health services are led by Nurse Our health services are led by nurse practitioner Jen Dennis who leads the health services providers, our school nurses in regular meetings, department meetings once a month. Our protocols are regularly updated based on the most recent information that we have. There are support staff trainings for our new nades and our clerical support who cover the nurse's office. Individual health plans are made for many students throughout the district. And we have a school district physician who we can consult on special area issues. Our physical environment is also a part of the W C C S and our facility is a safe and comfortable environment. We have really beefed it up with the athletic facilities. At our last, our last meeting, our first meeting of the wellness committee, we got a tour of the wellness facilities and they're really pretty outstanding. We're lucky to have them. We have pavilions at all of the schools so we can have some outdoor education as well. Their air purifiers and ventilation systems are well managed here. There's safety measures and protocols that are reviewed and practiced. There are fire safety and playground inspections that occur on a regular basis. And we have A E Ds in all of the schools and our health offices are pretty fully stocked. Another portion is the physical education program. We have, our physical education program is going to begin a review soon to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to create a good physical education program for our students. We have sports at all levels, including unified sports and intramurals beginning in the fourth grade. And in the elementary school, it's daily recess and I see the middle school and high school kids are wishing they could still have that daily recess. It's a lot of fun. And in fact, when kids don't say that's one of the favorite parts of their day, that's when I get a little concerned, but most kids absolutely love recess. Certainly not the only time they go outside. Another piece of this is the social emotional climate of the schools. And we have spent a lot of, invested a lot of energy in making the social emotional climate of our schools to be a good and positive one. We've spent, talked about restorative practices. You engaged in a little bit of our foundational restorative practice, which is just getting to know each other and listening to each other and explaining how we're feeling so we can really have, build those relationships. We have community circles like the one that you did. We have trauma sensitive trainings and environment. And S E L lessons are taught by our counselors once a week in every classroom and our counselors are available at other times as well. Speaking of counseling, Kristin Connors runs our counseling department with services ranging from social work to counseling. We have school psychologists and those are coordinated care teams that are in every school to speak specifically about any students who may be exhibiting difficulty or having trouble inside or outside the school and we talk about what we can do to really address those individual needs. All students are, participate in tier one services and what that means is that we, all of our teachers practice and set the foundation, lay the groundwork to have a positive classroom environment. So most of our students respond to that. If they have additional problems, don't respond to that, then we move up in our services. There's individual school based counseling and we're fortunate also to have Saratoga Center for the family here and the school district to work with families in need as well. And then there's health instruction, which is kind of goes without saying. We do instruct students in health education. Body systems at the elementary school, it's really embedded in, within a number of the other curricular areas, P E, counseling, science, our school resource officers come in. We talk about Aaron's Law, which is like a safety law, fire safety, human body systems and so forth. In the fifth grade, that beloved growing to maturity, again, there's some smiles out there with the middle school and high school students. It's much loved learning about puberty in the fifth grade. It is a new program, so if you remember the kind of old, not so great outdated slides. Everything is much better now and much more relevant to the age. There's also, actually I'm going to turn it over to Tom for the next part.
So I spoke to a couple of the health teachers at the middle school and they just gave a little bit of information about what their curriculum looks like and what their goals also are moving forward. So in eighth grade, students talk a lot about decision making processes as well as drug prevention. They have, I believe, Stephen Hill. So Stephen Hill actually came to the district in 2023 and spoke to families in the community as well about drug prevention and making healthy choices. So he is actually going to be in the eighth grade classrooms and all the eighth graders will have an opportunity this year to speak personally with him and, you know, tie that into their curriculum. One of our goals, you know, moving forward also is to take a look at sixth and seventh grade and how we could better bridge these gaps between the health education that's happening in the elementary schools and what the students are learning in eighth grade.
So we have very active departments that address those other seven areas. The wellness committee has started to dive deep into the other three components of the W C C S or W S S C. And that's family engagement, community engagement and employee wellness. So I'll talk briefly, family engagement. We have a couple of things that we do. So we have the Veterans Day run coming up. Each school has their own ways of engaging families, be it a multicultural dinner or a turkey trot or something like that. And those are all ways that we engage our families, but we're looking for more ways to do that. Also, community engagement. We have a wellness fair that's scheduled for the spring and we're hoping to really bring in a lot of community members for that and make that a great thing for our entire community. We have, we live in a wonderful community with a lot of resources and our wellness committee is hoping to make contact with our Chamber of Commerce in order to develop other programs and activities so that we can really be a part of the community with our schools and promote wellness throughout. There are therapy dogs that come in outside of the community and continuing education that occurs as well. There's just so many things that are available in our community that we want to connect with. Another really big piece that Tom is taking a big lead on is employee wellness.
So I'm going to start off by talking about employee wellness, but I do want everybody in here to really think about how this applies to themselves, not necessarily the airplane model, but the wellness piece. So not to assume everybody's been on an airplane, just to show a hands who's been on an airplane, seen one of these, heard about this. It's a very simple yet powerful image. It says, place the oxygen mask on yourself first before helping small children or others who may need your assistance. And the reason behind this is, is because if you stop breathing, you're physically unable to help other people. And it might seem really obvious, but what we need to do is take this approach when we talk about wellness. Anybody, educators, families, everybody in the community who interacts with our children, we really need to take a look at ourselves and make sure that we first are well so that we could be the best versions of ourselves for our kids. So some of the things we do really well in this district with regard to staff wellness, we have a district wide employee assistance program through the Human Resource Associates. This isn't just accessible to our district employees, it's accessible to their families as well. This might be therapists, they might point the way for finding resources with social emotional wellness. We have our C D P H P run, which is a yearly thing that the district does. We always try to have a great group of staff. I think we're always one of the top groups that are there. We're always trying to get more involved with that. We have access to district facilities before and after school hours. So Len Keys did take us on a really nice tour of the facilities. And we pushed out information to our staff encouraging them to utilize the facilities, especially at the high school that they could use before and after school hours. We have a strength and conditioning coach, Nate Farley. He's an awesome resource, not just for our student athletes, but for our staff as well. And we have district wellness days and activities that run throughout the year that support our wellness initiatives. Speaking just a little bit about what we do at the middle school, we're piloting some ideas and then we're really looking to push things out and, you know, take some opportunities at other schools as well. I personally am running an Atomic Habits book study with eighteen employees at the middle school and it's been going very well. To the right, really the whole summary of the book is that if we were to make one percent gains every day, what would that look like? And the image on the right, if you make a one percent gain every day, over the course of a year, you would actually be almost thirty eight times better at whatever it is. As opposed to if you had a decrease in improvement for one percent, you would be pretty much close to zero. We have a biweekly newsletter that we're pushing out information to staff. This might be just things happening within the district and the community, just trying to bring wellness into more conversations. We also have recipes that staff kind of, you know, have at home that they would like to share. I don't think anybody's going to turn down a really fast delicious crock pot recipe when you're rushing around. We have a chili cook off happening this Friday and we're also going to have staff come taste chili, interact with each other, but we're going to have our middle school wellness staff there to field questions as well as take feedback on what we as a wellness committee could do better to support our staff and our community in this district. And just really looking to improve the utilization of our facilities across the district. Again, make wellness a part of the conversation. A lot of businesses, large corporations actually have very well-built worksite health promotion programs and that's something that there's been a lot of research with where it decreases absenteeism, decreases health insurance claims and increases just overall wellness and productivity. So public schools and just schools in general is a place where the foundation hasn't yet been built for something like that. And it's definitely something I think the wellness committee could do a great job with and set the foundation moving forward.
Learned a little about the staff wellness, the community and family connections that we're looking to increase. And finally, one thing that we're pretty excited about is we are working on applying for a national award for our school district. And it can be awarded in any one of the ten areas that were mentioned before. We're hoping to apply for at least five of the ten, maybe even more. We'll see. We have a great start though. So Tom created this wonderful graphic here.
So just final thoughts is we want everybody and especially thank you to the board for giving us this opportunity to speak about really, a really important topic that paves the way for other things. We encourage everybody to think about their own wellness, think about how their wellness impacts others around them. And just the importance, especially when we're talking about our kids, you know, everybody that works with our kids should be well first. So thank you guys.
Thank you. Oh my gosh. Wellness committee, we'd like to give you a nature's toothbrush. For all of you, here's nature's toothbrush. Would you have to have it like that?
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions for our presenters? And thank you very much for taking the time to come and speak with us tonight. So I'm looking down that way and then I'm looking this way.
Yeah, I was wondering, I don't know if this question is for Ms. Cause, Mr. Carney, or if it's for Jody and the team here. But when we were talking about the P E program review, I was just wondering, do we have a sense of what, you know, what that entails or what that looks like?
We have a review process in general for all our curricular areas on a regular basis. So we have a standard kind of template that's followed looking at, do we need to update the curriculum based on the changes from the state? Are we looking to update resources, for example, in P E? If they're looking to add new curriculum, does that involve resources? So there's a budget piece to it as well. So it's a comprehensive K-12 review.
Excuse me, thank you. Anybody down there?
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Next on the agenda is our recognition of visitors who would like to speak on an agenda item. Just a reminder that the board uses the public comment period as an opportunity to listen to concerns, but does not debate issues or enter into a question and answer session. And it is also important that no person addressing the board initiates comments about individual board members or employees or students of the district. And I have two individuals who signed in and I, I would, I think they, both topics look like they fall under wellness, so I'm going to assume that you both want to talk during this time. So I have Matt. I don't want to butcher the last name. Fargion.
So my name's Matt Fargion. I sent a letter to.
Could you do me a favor and use the microphone?
Yeah.
Okay.
I sent a letter to Dr. Monroe last week. Security concerns I have. So I got to copy this and just pass it around quickly.
It just, the microphone helps because it's being sent out to everybody.
So I'll start again. My name is Matt Fargion. I'm a lifelong Capitol District resident. I've lived in the town of Bethlehem for just about twenty years. I have three boys in the school. One's a sophomore here, or I'm sorry, one's a sophomore at the high school. I have an eighth grader and a sixth grader at the middle school. The letter I'm, you guys are passing around here, I sent to Dr. Monroe, the principal at the middle school, the principal at the high school and the two S R Os. First, a little bit more about me. I spent twenty years as a police officer in the city of Albany. I rose to the rank and when I retired, I was detective lieutenant in charge of the Children and Family Services Unit, which is the juvenile unit in Albany Police Department. After, after I retired, I was lucky enough to get a job for two and a half years as assistant director of security for the Albany School District. Where I worked hand in hand, again, with the police department, the school board and district staff from superintendent down to maintenance. Couple of things here. First of all, I feel for you guys and for principals at the schools for the calls and the SWAT incidents you've had over the last month and a half. Unfortunately, my fifteen years as a detective and two years as a, you know, a director of security, I was involved in a lot of those decision makings. I know it's not an easy decision to make and from what I've learned and what I know, you guys made a hundred percent the right decision. Have the kids come to school. School's the safest place for them, especially when you're going to have more cops in the buildings on those days. So again, I know it's not easy. I know you guys get pushed and pulled and second guessed and third guessed and fourth guessed, but I a hundred percent think you guys made the right decision. I chose not to come to the last few meetings. I didn't want this to be a conversation because it's about passion or about what's going on right now. This is things that I've seen over, you know, the twelve years my kids have been in school. Again, you guys do a great job on a daily basis. I have no concerns with my kids going to school here. I never think anything. But like everything else, there's always things that can be changed or moved about. So a few of these I'm just going to touch on because Dr. Monroe was kind enough to send me an email back and I know some of these are in the works or haven't done before. Again, some of these I didn't know any answers to, so I just asked a question. The risk assessments, I believe you've had one done recently. If you ever have to do another one, I really recommend going with the New York City Division of Homeland Security. They did a great job for us when we were at the Albany School District. Did everything soup and nuts where they interviewed security staff, they interviewed the unions, they interviewed teachers, they interviewed maintenance. And then they actually went around and looked at the buildings and they gave you a very comprehensive report. Second one, again, you know, partial to what I did for a long time. I think the district needs director of security. You've got a big district here. You've got a lot of kids. More importantly, you've got a lot of buildings. And each building has their own way of doing things per se, which is okay because you're going to do different things in an elementary school than you're going to do in the high school. But you need that person for, that's a professional, a person has a lot of knowledge of security in buildings. They need to be the liaison for the police department, the codes, the fire department, the FBI and whatever other units in the area they have. They also, more importantly, would be able to talk to other school districts that have head of security and keep up on, you know, security trends and whatnot throughout the year. A couple of problems that I've seen that bother me, first. A couple of problems that I've seen that bother me, first and foremost, Dr. Monroe told me you guys are working on, is after-school night, nights in the buildings and Saturday and Sunday, the buildings are wide open. I find that as a huge problem, because you don't know who's coming in and out of your buildings for a safety aspect or for, you know, people stealing stuff out of the buildings. You have no idea who's coming in, and more importantly, who's leaving. So I think, you know, you need to, and I know you guys are working on it, but you need to find a way of, you know, securing the buildings at all times. Not act like it's the day and the kids are at school. You need to secure the buildings at all times. I wrote some ideas on here, because I'm not, I don't want to be the guy that just comes here and complains about things, so I put some ideas down that what may help, at least to start. Some things I've seen during the school day, I've seen like first-floor windows open, and I have driven by schools and stopped at schools where doors are being propped. That's a big problem when the kids are in the building, because the safest thing that the kids have and the staff have at the building is the brick and mortar of the building. That's either going to stop from somebody coming in, or it's going to slow somebody down coming in the building. It's going to give you, it's going to give you a time to either do a lockdown or a lockout, which I know unfortunately in the last month, you guys have become very good at. So I think if you could make sure, and I know that's not easy, it wasn't easy at the Albany School District either, it was like banging your head against the wall. Hey, guys, I know it's hot, but you got to keep the windows closed. Hey, guys, don't prop the door, we have to keep it closed. And then a couple of long-term goals, camera monitoring. Cameras are great. Biggest problem cameras are a lot of times, they catch the tragedy, and they're the first part of investigative lead for the detectives or investigators to come out for a crime or a tragedy. I know you guys have the cameras up all day, but my understanding is it's either done by a secretary or a principal, but they've got a thousand other chores to do. I think the district needs to think about employing somebody who is just charged with watching the cameras all day. Another area is security in school monitors, actually having staff hear that their sole job is security, their sole job is to protect the building, protect the staff, protect the kids in the building. Albany School District's had very good luck with that. Another thing that these people become is mentors to the kids, and the kids learn and trust them, so you learn a lot of other things about the kids, things they're having at home, things, problems that they're having at home, good things that they're having at home, problems they're having with other kids in the school. And they're immensely a help. And then the last one is metal detectors, wands, and bag checks. I know you guys did bag checks during the week when you had all the SWAT incidents, correct? Bag checks, if you don't have a wand or a metal detector, go with it, it's just making people feel good. You know, if you don't, you know, you're telling people that we're going to do bag checks when we come to school. If I'm a guy that wants to do something harm at school, I'm just going to stick something in my pants, going to stick something, you know, some plate, or I'll leave it outside and come back for it later, because I know they're going to check the bags. Metal detectors, I'm a big proponent of. I think it makes the Albany, the city of Albany, and middle schools and high schools the safest schools in the area. Yes, they have their own problems with some other issues, but on a daily basis, there's no worry about somebody coming in the building with a weapon, especially a handgun or a rifle or something along those lines. You know, we go to, we use metal detectors on a regular basis. At sporting events, concerts, airports, it's just another day. And the two and a half years I worked at the school district, the best part of the day was when the kids were coming in the building and the bags were being checked and they're going to the, they're going through the metal detectors. The kids were in a good mood, we got to meet and greet the kids, you got to know the kids, and you also found, on some days, if Bobby was having a bad day, maybe you take a note of that and have the guidance counselor, psychologist, or something grab them out of class and make sure everything's okay. And for all the adverse effects that there may be to students and vendors that come through the metal detectors, the amount of safety it brings, I think, takes it to the top, because kids get used to it, they're resilient, they get used to anything. And I think that's it, I mean, it's written here better. I appreciate everything you guys do, and like I said, this is just taking it to the next level. I have no concern with sending my kids to school here, I'm proud to have my kids go to school here. I just worry, I don't want anything bad to happen, that's all. Thank you, Tom, have a good night.
Thank you. And next I have Ken Klein.
All right, good evening, my name's Ken Klein. I'm a resident of Slingerlands, and I have two daughters at Bethlehem High School, ninth grader and an eleventh grader. My background, I started teaching in New York City schools in 1994. Past 10 years, I've served as an administrator, supervising areas such as special education, English as a new language, guidance, health and physical education, and student discipline. I've worked both in high-performing and low-performing schools in both urban and suburban communities. For the past six years, I've been an Assistant Principal at Albany High School, and I agree with everything that Matt Fargion just said. We work together as colleagues, we're neighbors, and we're friends. So I came here tonight both to support and, I guess, endorse the message that he brought forward to you, and also to add on to. I'm actually here to talk more about social-emotional learning, but as you know, it ties closely with safety and security. One of my first noticings as a parent was that any teenager can walk into the high school unchecked. IDs are not checked, bags are not checked, pockets are not emptied. We simply don't know who is entering our schools or what they're bringing in with them. Of course, data looks very good, we have very few VADERS. For those who don't know, VADERS is an acronym, stands for Violent and Disruptive Incident Reports. But if we're not checking for contraband, such as vaping devices, drugs, tasers, knives, other weapons, we are simply creating a false sense of security not grounded in reality. Now for the social-emotional piece. Students need to feel safe and possess a sense of belonging, so that when a crisis arises, as we experience that first week of school, they're better equipped to deal with their emotions. I love the emphasis on wellness tonight, it's a great presentation, and I was taking notes, so I was the guy on my phone prepping for this, I didn't do the homework that my friend and colleague did in advance. When physical or mental wellness are compromised, and I'm taking this off the presentation, right, it has a negative impact on learning. So I'd like to go back in time, first day of school. I'd love to see aspects of the presentation tonight embedded in the schedule for not only the first day of school, but also the first week of school, and then of course throughout the school year, which would be, of course, with any new curriculum that you roll out. Unfortunately, when I asked my freshman daughter, "How was your first day of school?", her response lacked enthusiasm. "What did you do?" "Well, we reviewed course syllabus in every one of our classes." I asked her what she remembered. "Not much." "The one class she remembered the most about grading policy and course content was the teacher who also gave her coloring pencils, and she was able to color, and she colored while listening to the teacher." That actually, strangely, kept her focus on the topic. I said, "What, no icebreakers, no team builders, no turn and talk to a partner?" She said, "No, it was boring." This is her first day as a high school student, and if you know my daughter, Alexa, she loves school, she gets excited about homework, she gets upset if she gets a 98 or a 99 on a test and it wasn't 100. So this is a kid who loves school. One class, she did say they filled out a getting-to-know-you sheet, and in a second class, they did speak briefly with another student. But beyond that, there wasn't much. She's now hearing my stories about freshman first day at Albany High School, and certainly don't want to do a compare and contrast with Bethlehem School District and Albany School District, but I would like to emphasize what we did well with our freshman first day. When students arrived, they arrived two teachers lined up, clapping and cheering and welcoming them as they came into the building. We had a DJ, professional DJ and MC in our auditorium, we had performances by the cheerleaders. There was a lot of rah 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 cheering, we had a presentation about the school, right, just in terms of the academic programs, sports, after-school activities. Key people in the building were introduced, and we had to do this silly little routine of high-fiving and all that, it was just a lot of fun. After that, we broke into different teams, students, some students remained for a student panel of upperclassmen, and it was a Q&amp;A about their experiences and lessons learned as ninth and 10th graders. We had community-based organizations set up in the gym, it was sort of like a college fair, but with community-based organizations. Academy presentations to talk about key people in the academy, meet your social worker, meet your school site, meet your Assistant Principal. Along with team-building activities. We also had student-led building tours, the kids had a look of the entire inside of the building. Then they followed their schedule, meeting each of their teachers for 20 minutes, where it was a meet and greet and icebreakers, and that was it, nothing in terms of traditionally academic talk. The day ended with a field day, outside, it was a beautiful day. Football's being thrown, soccer balls, BJ, kids loved it, smiling faces. We even gave them free T-shirts with the saying, "We got you." That's what kids say. I don't say, "We got you." It was a great message, and I was happy. SEL themes followed each school day during the first week of school. So freshmen had their own special day that Friday. The following week, all our students return, every class had different themes related to SEL, social-emotional learning. Course syllabus and course content was not introduced until the second week of school, mostly, some teachers broke the rules. I asked our, I asked our school leaders here tonight, and not here, to explore how we can implement the very items that were presented tonight, beginning with the first day of school, so that initial first day, students are met with enthusiasm, they're embraced, they feel welcomed, and they want to come back the second and third day of When students are, feel appreciated and valued, we know that they can strive to be their best, they can excel physically, socially, mentally, and of course academically, and that's what we all want, we want our students to be fully prepared for post-secondary life. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have anyone who wanted to address the board on an agenda item who did not sign in? Next on the agenda, item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended by the Superintendent at the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one through four. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the Superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items, one through 12. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? C, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the Superintendent at the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through four. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? D, other action items. It is recommended by the Superintendent that the Board of Education approve the following action items, one through three. So moved. Any discussion?
Just noting, you know, this is following up in part on the comments that John made last time. We now have the special meeting for the library organized.
Yes, the resolution too. Correct. That's item number three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions that carries? Item seven, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. Do we have anyone who'd like to address the board on a non-agenda item? Now is the time to come to the microphone. Item eight, future meetings and events. On Monday, October 28th, at 5:30 at the high school, we have our board retreat that's rescheduled from earlier in September. And then our next regular board meeting is on November 6th, anticipating executive session at 6:00, and then reconvening to our open meeting at 7:00. The meeting after that is on, and I'm just going to comment, November 6th, that's at the high school. On November 20th, that meeting is at Hamegrail. And again, anticipating executive session at 6:00, and reconvening to public session at 7:00. And on Monday, November 25th, at 5:00, we have a facilities committee meeting, and at 6:00, we have a policy committee meeting, and those are both in the district office. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. And pig-supa people, please don't forget to sign out. There's a sheet on this end, and I think down on that end also.